I call the meeting of the Ottawa City Planning Commission to order. It is Wednesday, February the 8th, 7:00 PM. And would you call the roll, please?
Member Kane?
Here.
Member Crowley?
Here.
Member Elmer?
Here.
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Here.
Member Maynes?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Winika? Absent. Chairperson Lantis?
Here.
All right, at this time, we've changed our statement on public comments a little. Subject to the above restrictions, which I don't see any above restrictions, persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as that agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Planning Commission may do so at this time when called upon by the Chair. Comments on personal matters and matters pending in the courts or with outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any public comment entered via online chat will not be recognized or commented upon. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. The governing body will take comments under advisement. At this time, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make any declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to, or all sides, on any item on the agenda so that they may come to a fair decision.
Chairman, I'll just mention that the party involved with the King Street project is someone who is involved with the Historical Society. I don't believe it'll affect my ability to make a decision, but I just wanted to be open about that.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll ask if there are any public comments that don't deal with any item on the agenda this evening. We didn't have anyone registered and saying none, we'll move on. Minutes, were there any changes needed to the January 26, 2023 study session minutes? Hearing the sitting none, do we have a motion to accept the study session meeting minutes as written?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think it was just delayed, okay. All right, so we've got several public hearings on the agenda tonight, and we're going to try to get through these as fast as we can for everyone involved. So, public hearing number one is Amendment to the Fence Regulation Regarding Fences and Utility Easements. Jenna Hillier, our planning person, will give us a little presentation.
Good evening. It was on, okay. Thank you very much. So this, we are proposing to make changes to the language regarding fences in our easements and restrict them more so than we have been. We've been currently allowing fences to be placed in easements with conditions. This language will change that to there not being, not allowing fences and easements except for under certain circumstances and with a conditional use permit.
Do you have any other presentation? Yeah, here you go.
I do.
That's it?
That was it.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? I guess I forgot to open the public hearing, but I will now close the public hearing. That I failed, though, sorry about that. And discussion by the commissioners.
The only thing that I would like to discuss is, as we had in the study session, is making certain that with recommendation that the utilities on future development be moved to the public street right of way versus running through the bag.
I would like to bring that to the study session in the future to discuss how we would go about changing that.
Right.
If possible. I see our utility director is here. Do you have any comment you'd care to make on it? Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kane?
I have no comments.
Okay. In that case then, public hearings closed and now is this a, do we approve or deny this? Or do we recommend to the city commission that? This is a recommendation to the city commission?
I believe it's a recommendation that the city commission.
Okay, we consider a motion to recommend to the city commission that they approve the changes to the ordinance?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion, and I think Commissioner Kane, Commissioner Crowley, would you call the roll, please?
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Winika is absent. Member Elmer?
Yes.
Public hearing number two, 226 West 23rd Street, Ottawa, Oakstar Bank, minor replat of lot four and part of lot five of ABK Edition, Oakstar Bank and Casey Colburn. I'm going to open the public hearing and Jenna, would you like to make your presentation?
So this is a, we do have Casey Colburn, who is the developer with us online for, if anyone has any questions outside of my scope. So they're seeking to combine one parcel and part of another, just for clarity's sake, and just kind of clean up that area. And they also have a 10-foot right-of-way dedicated on West 23rd Street. It's an additional right-of-way. This is the location. It's just north of where the Holiday Inn currently is. And here is a zoomed-in version of the plat that they're recommending that, that we're recommending that we approve tonight.
Is that it?
That is it, do you?
Okay.
Casey, do you have anything to add that I might have missed here?
Commissioners, thanks for having us tonight. And I think we covered about everything. Like we said, it's just more of a cleaning up of a area that's probably not going to be buildable and combining it into another, into this lot and just kind of getting the plat cleaned up and then dedicating some right-of-way along 23rd Street. So, open to any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the developer?
I didn't hear what he had to say.
Could we turn it up just a little bit?
Is there a way to turn that volume up?
I apologize, Casey. I was, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I heard wah wah wah, like Charlie Brown teacher almost.
Are you, our commissioners, are you able to hear me now?
It's...
It's on our end, I think. So we can hear and I'm not here. The speakers here, I think, are not working.
Can you try again, Casey?
Are you able to hear me now?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's crazy, because I can hear him.
I can, I can hear that he's talking. I can't quite make out where he's...
Yeah, that's, that's how I am.
Do you mind if I paraphrase? And you can correct me if I'm wrong, since I can hear you. This is basically just a cleanup and combining a lot and a partial lot into one larger tract just for the sake of future development, sake of future use and future development?
Correct, Commissioner.
All right, did you guys catch that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and commission discussion.
I appreciate Oakstar actually taking the initiative and cleaning this up and combining the lots. I think that it will help future and I just, thanks, I appreciate it.
Just another cleanup on one of our entrances to the community to make it look nicer. I like that, so.
Right, it's a good, good thing.
Anyone, Commissioner Kane?
I have nothing.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the city commission that they approve or deny this plat. It sounds like approve this plat, replat.
So moved.
Commissioners Staresnik-Dine moved, is there a second? And Commissioner Mayne seconded, call the roll.
Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson Winika is absent.
Thank you. Item number three, 1004 South Walnut, conditional use permit. I will open the public hearing and call on Jenna Hillier to make her presentation.
This is a conditional use permit for 1004 South Walnut. This is a, it's zoned R1, and he is asking to be allowed to build a duplex on this lot. This is, we found this to be consistent with the uses of the area. This is where it is located. And this has been a vacant lot for quite a while, so this is a good reuse of a vacant lot and especially on a corner lot. These are three-bedroom, two-bath units with a driveway, and they do meet all of the front setbacks for this area. And this is the site plan that he's provided for us.
Okay.
And we've got a slate here this evening.
Do, with the applicant, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't have anything to add, but if you happen to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any pilot you hear from the public that wishes to address this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions or?
The only comment that I have goes back to the study session, and it's making comment on the fact of the conditional use of what's being added as a condition is something that's already required. And I question the condition. Just voicing myself, letting that be known publicly. I have concerns.
And of course, my concern, that I say every time we put a duplex in with three bedrooms and a one-car garage and a place for one car on the parking, on the off-street parking is, we need to do something about our regulations to make our parking regulations be more modern. When three-bedroom houses can mean there'll be three or four cars in the parking lot. And maybe even if it's still just a single family in there, there could still be three or four cars, and so we're creating. When we put many of these in a small area, we're creating a parking problem. So, again, we need housing. I think this is a good reuse of this, since it's been sitting there and has been available for single families. So, any other concerns or comments?
This meets the setbacks for the corner?
It is, yes, okay.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Nope.
I think we entertain a motion to recommend to the city commission that they, is it a recommendation to the city commission again on this one?
I believe so.
Okay, we'll do it that way, even if it's not.
There you go, we'll cover the bases.
For the, yeah, for the sake of the fact that we are working with, in new territory, we'll, we'll...
I appreciate that, thank you.
That's all right, so I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the city commission.
So moved.
Commissioner Crowley, do we have a second? Commissioner Mayne second, would you call the roll?
Vice Chairperson Winika is absent. Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Yes.
Okay, moving down. Item number four is 916 South Walnut, conditional use permit. I will open the public hearing and ask Jenna Hillier to give us her presentation.
This is a very similar situation to the last one. It's actually even on the same street. Conditional use permit or permission to build a duplex in a R1 low-density residential area. Again, it does allow for it. There's, there are others that are similar to that in this area. And again, with our need for housing, this is a good reuse of this lot. And this is where it is located, on Walnut. He is also, it's a very similar project, other than his, the garage protrudes out further. And so this is requiring a 25-foot setback in the front.
Okay. Now, is that 25-foot, I, I don't remember. Is that 25-foot setback from the front porch? Or is that 25-foot setback from the front of the garage?
From the front of garage.
Okay, okay, thanks. So there's enough room there to park a car off the street? Yeah, okay. Have to ask.
I know, I'm with you, I get you.
Is that, is that your?
That is it, yes.
Okay. Is the developer here? Developer, would you make any comments?
I am really nothing additional to add. I'm here to answer questions as they may.
Thank you. Brother, is there any member of the public that is here tonight that wishes to make a comment?
We do have the statement.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we'll, we do have a written statement from Olive Bickerstaff of 920 South Walnut, who lives in the area, and she's just concerned with stormwater and flooding when you cover the area. And she was hoping that you'd do something to make sure that her property didn't receive more water than it's now receiving. So, we've got that in the record now. So, are there any other comments that people wish to make? And every commissioner has a copy of that, and we have a copy of that in our record as well. So, Commissioner, any other comments? Or I guess I'll close the public hearing and ask now for comments from the commission.
Is this the one where we were asking about the sidewalks? Is this the property where we were wondering if it, about the sidewalk situation?
And there is no provision that I've found that would require us to have him put one in when there isn't a connecting sidewalk.
And this property is basically right by the Prairie Spirit Trail as well?
I think if you were asking for a replat of a lot, then we could ask to have a sidewalk put in as part of the replat. But I don't think just for a conditional use, we can ask for that. I don't, I seem to recall that from a discussion we had a year or so ago, that we can't ask for that. There's no other comments, motion to?
Actually, this is, I do know, and I'm not certain where it's located, but I'm pretty certain in the property maintenance section, just to address the concern of Olive, is that there is, that you do have a provision that does not allow for the water to create a nuisance, a public nuisance. And so I'm sure that whenever the building is being constructed, the building official will address the drainage and hydrology of the area. I'm assuming that they would. But anyway, just for publicly being known, there is something already in place within the city that allows for that property maintenance, I believe. I can't, I was looking for it, and I can't find it. So it's a lot of words and a lot of places, and I don't have time to look for it. But I know that it's there, I just don't know where it's at. But for her concern, that may be something you can address with her.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I was going to say something about that, too, because there really is no inspections on that. It's kind of the, it's the builder's responsibility to take care of that. And I was going to ask that question, beans it's only, you are tied on the side yard setbacks, what do you plan on doing with the stormwater?
So that yard, Janice?
Yeah, please. That way our online folks can hear.
That lot size is so large that we can disperse the water both in the back and to the front. So any of the side drainage, and the way that that house is set up, you'll see that roof lines protrude into where we can control that water to go to the front or the back and not just run off the rooftop into their yards.
Do you know how the natural watershed is over in that area?
The house that was there that was torn off set more to the south of it, and it was right on that property line to the south. And how it went, I couldn't answer. That was a pretty well dilapidated property when we...
Understood, and you're also building in another area, so that's where I guess the neighbors' concerns are, is that it's being brought closer to the front, probably closer to her property as well. And water may already be an issue for her, so therefore she's expressing those concerns. And it is the maintenance aspect of the ordinance, it's not, it would be like somebody going out, if there's a complaint, someone coming in, and they would have to maintain it. So that's, that in itself is, you know, as you're building it, keeping that in mind and being neighborly type of thing. They're probably used to having water coming, and they're just thinking they're going to have a bigger problem.
Correct, and in this construction, the idea would be to be catching the water and dispersing it into an appropriate place on that property and not dispersing it onto a neighboring property, just like I wouldn't want someone to be doing to our property, I wouldn't want to be doing it to someone else's.
Correct, and thank you for, thank you. Crowley, I'm sorry, I kind of started...
Scouts can also be, you know, once you get your locations of things, you know, you can always tie them together and disperse the water in different directions pretty easily.
Absolutely.
Trying to think, does that, does that back up to Park Creek? Or is that Park Creek on west of that?
Do we have an aerial of that?
And just for the record, would you identify yourself so we have?
Sorry, I'm Raymond Love, I'm the owner and developer of this property.
Thank you.
Do we have an aerial of?
Looking in the handout.
Would you go back to the aerial of the lot?
So it looks like as if there is a...
Is that the diagonal there for the creek?
No, it's what he's talking about.
Skunk Ron is over, okay, okay.
Yeah, I try to call it Park Creek for the record, because that's what it is.
Last pause there.
Okay, thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion to...
I also want to express my concerns about the conditional use that's on this. There's, it's regulations that are already in place for any, if it were a single family, so there's really not a condition.
And a correction, this does not need to go to a city commission, these can be approved here.
These are approved here, okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve or deny the?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a couple of seconds, so, would you call the roll?
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Winika is absent. Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
I think, just so we have this on the record, it sounds like we're whipping through these, but we had lengthy discussions on these at our study session. So with five of them, we're not, we're not trying to let any grass grow under our feet tonight with five of them on the agenda. Item number, I get all of them on that page. No, I did not.
We're on number five.
Item number five, 634 North King, rezoned from I-2 heavy industrial district to multi-use residential, something C, whatever that is, mixed-use residential commercial district. And Dietz is the applicant, and I'll open the public hearing and ask Jenna to give us a report.
Mr. Dietz would like to restore this building. This was built in 1911. It's, was formerly a Warner Fence Manufacturing Building and has sat vacant and unused for quite a while, and it's dilapidated. He is proposing that we, that he be able to use, take the office building and convert that to a residential housing space and then use the rest of it for storage purposes. And so this zoning will allow for those, and it's a good, this is its location there at the corner of North King and, how do you pronounce that, Massasoit?
Yes.
Okay. And there's, it's got quite an interesting mix of, this is the zoning map of uses in this area. So mixed use isn't completely out of the realm of possibility here. It is, we have mixed use a little bit further to the east here, east and the south. But this might be an interesting way to start. One, we get to restore historic buildings. And two, it might spur some other interest in the sort of rezoning and development in this area. And this is the building as it is currently. I have a couple pictures of that. And that is where we are at with that today. I think it's a fantastic reuse of this building. And we have Mr. Dietz here, if you have any questions for him.
Do you have, we have any comment that you'd like to make on?
No, just here to answer questions.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing the hearing, no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commissioner comments.
I'm just happy to see this building finding a new use. And I don't know that, I don't think that making this a mixed-use property will change the look or feel of the neighborhood around it. I think someone driving around wouldn't notice the difference. So I don't think it'll have a negative impact. It'll have a positive one that the building's being used.
Positive, you're very significant impact.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be positive that the building's being used again. I think that's a great thing.
And I agree 100% with that. What I, I have questions of concern that I had brought up in the study session is that we're spot zoning again. And it's going to continue if you, if this is what we all want.
My comment to that, I think it's a case-by-case basis, and this situation, I have no problem with it. It's going to be an awesome project.
And I, I think my only comment on that would be, I agree 100%, but as I look at that area and, you know, we're all involved in planning in one way or the other, I just can't see that ever being industrial again.
Absolutely, I understand, which is exactly why I was discussing about, why are we not looking at it as future rezoning versus spot zoning? Why are we not looking at the whole? Why, you know, for planning, why are we not planning the future, not just for the individual lot?
And again, that's a great item for the study session, is why we're, you know, to look at those areas that will never be used for what they're zoned for again and get them so when somebody comes in, they've got a better opportunity to...
And as we discussed, it creates value.
Yeah, it does, yeah. Anything else? Commissioner Kane?
No, I just think it's a brilliant plan for a historic building, and I am excited to see the finished product when it's done.
Okay, could you hear it?
Not a word.
He said it was a brilliant plan, he was excited to see the building when it was done.
Thank you. We have Cal as the interpreter.
I can hear that, and you all can't, because I have...
I can't hear a word you're saying.
It's just in the right place.
Because I couldn't hear. And I'm, and I'm on the, I'm on, I'm on tape, so when I tell people I can't hear what they're saying, I'm in trouble now. Anyway, do we have a, let's see, do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
So moved.
Rezone, I'm sorry, this is a rezone. I'm sorry, I made...
We can actually approve this, it doesn't have to be...
Well, no, this, this, it sends a rezone, this will have to go to the commission, I believe. So we'd be making a motion for the commission to approve the rezone.
So moved.
I think Brian just...
Brian just, Commissioner Kane made the motion, is there a second? Motion of second, would you call the roll?
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Staresnik-Dine?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Winika is absent. Member Elmer?
No.
Member Maynes?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes. And that, just all of you who are here, I think we're done with the ones you're involved in. And just thanks for investing in our community, and special thanks to... Well, we, no, I know we have another, but these guys, I don't think any of them are involved in that. I just wanted to thank them for investing in the community, especially Dr. Dietz for his continued effort to bring historic buildings in the community back into use. So, thank you all for that. Item number six, 3292 Wildcat Drive and 2324 East Logan, vacation of a utility easement. And that was brought to us by Nick Ford. And I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Jenna to give us her report.
This lot is located by 68 and 35. This piece of property is right behind the gas station, right next to Central RV. It is part of, it's owned by the same individual who owns Central RV, who is here with us this evening. And what we are asking for is a vacation of the easement that is here on, here's a closer look of it, here on the west side of Wildcat Drive. Our utilities have signed off on that. I was able to reach most of the other utilities outside. I have one that I haven't heard back from yet, but don't anticipate any issues with that.
Anything else?
I would like to see how that easement ties in with access going, does this kind of back up against I-35?
The easement's not.
No, it's, it's in between.
It's the other side of the property.
The easement's on the side that...
And it's in between, there's like two separate parcels. And that easement was set up so that they would be able to have a development there, and that development didn't happen. And now because they want, were they going to be combining that lot?
That's correct, combining it to sell.
And they don't really, they don't want to create a problem like with the fencing. They don't want an easement coming up the middle, and then they can't utilize that property.
But it's never been used.
Does the developer have anything they'd like to add, any comments?
No, KCPL Rural Water District, they had an easement going through there, too. They both signed off on it, released every...
No, KCPL Rural Water District, they had an easement going through there too. They both signed off on it, released everything. You guys were the last ones in that same area.
Any public comment on that? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing and commissioner comments.
I think it's a good idea that we're cleaning up problems for potential future issues.
Anything else? Public Works Director, have any comment? Okay. We don't have any comments. I'd, let's see, what are we doing here? Do we, do we approve or deny this, or do we recommend? This is the city?
Yes.
Okay, we'll need a motion to recommend to the city approval of the vacating utility easement.
So moved.
Commissioner Elmer moved that we do that. Second?
Second.
Motion to second, would you call the roll?
Chairperson Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Sturznic Dean?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Wanika is absent. Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Mainz?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of our public hearings. Under old business, we have a request by Underwood Equipment to amend the dimensional standards for billboard signs. And we don't have any recommendations that would require action tonight, so I've asked Jenna to put that back on her study session agenda with some recommendations on if we should, how big it should be, that sort of thing. Please put that back on her. Okay. Is there any new business?
I do have a question. When does it
I'm sorry, you need to come to the, you need to come to the microphone and state your name, please.
When does it become final and sort of filed and everything like that?
That would be after, when will this go on the city commission agenda? Do we know?
No, that's right. Likely it'll go on upcoming Monday's study session, but the one after, which would put it on a March first regular meeting agenda for their consideration for approval.
And then once it's approved, is there a publication of the new, is there any kind of publication or does it just get filed with the Register of Deeds?
I'm going to have to follow up on that. I don't know that answer.
I believe it just gets filed with Register of Deeds.
Okay, so it will be at least a probable, I would say by the fifteenth of March it should be completed, I would think.
My buyer's on the place, as far as I knew, talking with Cracher Title and everything, after the publication was done, this was pretty much like the final stamp of approval by the city. I'm assuming by what we're talking about now, it is not.
No, it is, it requires city action, which they would take at a regular commission meeting. Their next regular commission meeting is March the
The next regular commission meeting is February fifteenth.
Okay.
But it would have to go on to this next Monday's study session, which means
It's full.
It would make it into the packet tomorrow. We need to touch base with the city attorney. We can talk about the timing after this and we might be able to move it to the, the next meeting. My definite
That's a process that we're not involved in. We've recommended the city that they, that they approve it. So any discussion, she would be the person to have the discussion with, but tonight's not the place for that.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay. Can I give you my number?
Any new business? No new business. Next regularly scheduled Planning Commission Study Session Meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three at noon. And the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission Meeting will be Wednesday, March eighth at seven PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to